Good evening, welcome to the Ashland Planning Board. It is February fourteenth, twenty nineteen, it's about seven eighteen. We're here in the Selectman's Meeting Room of Town Hall. And we are being recorded and broadcast on WACA Cable Access TV, and we thank them for that. Happy Valentine's Day. We have two public discussions for preliminary subdivision plans, which does not actually give them the ability to actually build something, but it's something that they develop or sometimes choose to do before submitting a definitive plan. And the first one is Village of the Americas Phase Eight. And the second is going to be called Village at Clocktown. This is the property where a portion of it is the, where we're gonna put the public safety building. And we'll do that after we first talk about Village of the Americas. So with that, I'll invite the applicant to introduce himself and tell us what they're talking about doing.
I'm Dale McKinnon from Gary Earnholden. We're representing a preliminary plan for the property, representing Ashland Chestnut Realty LLC. Village of Americas Phase Three, Phase Eight, excuse me. Purpose of the preliminary plan is essentially to, the purpose is to freeze the zoning for the site. It's not the intention to actually construct this particular subdivision. We have to come back within seven months with a definitive plan to actually accomplish that, but this is the first step in that process. So what we've proposed is a simple subdivision, dividing that property into three lots.
Okay. With that said, first of all, I want to thank you for being open and honest about the purpose of this being to lock in zoning.
Right.
I've had some discussions in Town Hall yesterday. I spoke with our planning director, with the town manager, and town council. And all of them agreed that there are absolutely no plans or discussions in that any of us are aware of, of doing any rezoning on this property whatsoever, apart from what was discussed earlier in the year. We're back in November. And the, we would not move ahead with that kind of rezoning with, unless there was agreement from the applicants as well. So it is my personal opinion that you are wasting your time with this because by the time you'd come back with a definitive plan in seven months, you'll find the rules haven't changed.
Right.
But you're completely within your rights. Also in talking to town council, she advised that in her opinion, if you make significant changes in the definitive plan, that we would probably be able to rule that it is a new plan and that the locking in of zoning wouldn't apply. So for both of those reasons, I don't think this is a worthwhile process, but you're totally within your rights to do it. So, that said, looking at this, if I'm, I see Lot One and Lot Two off to, on the America Boulevard side of the new road. I see Lot One up at the top.
This is Lot Three, including a portion of around the.
But Lot, Lot Three includes the old commercial? The existing buildings?
Yes, this is Lot Three, including.
Oh, okay, cuz I thought I saw a dotted line across there that I thought was the lot line between Lot Two and Lot Three, and I thought it extended all the way across.
This is the proposed One, the proposed Two, and this is part of Lot Three, which is.
Oh, that dotted line is not the lot line, that's, now I, now I see that, I was looking at the wrong line. Okay, so that was my confusion.
Could we let people come up and look at this if?
Yeah, and, yeah, you wanna take a picture? That'd be fine.
Should I go over there, be further away from you?
In, in just a minute, I'm gonna, gonna open it up, so. And the, the road that you've proposed, is that, I don't, I assume you didn't specify public or private at this point on the plan, okay. So are, in, in, up to this point, all the roads in this development have been private, so I would assume that that would be continuing. Okay.
And so the road, the proposed road there is a twenty-four foot road with sidewalks, is that correct?
Yes.
And my understanding is, from a technical review standpoint, within the town staff, they haven't seen anything where this does not comply with zoning. This has not been reviewed by fire and safety because of course, we don't have any sense of what buildings are going there. Hasn't been reviewed by Board of Health, hasn't been reviewed by.
No, it had.
Or has it been?
Right, I had to speak to different departments, and Board of Health is one of the departments they have to submit this to.
Okay.
So at this point, they don't have comments because it's a preliminary plan, it's just about land.
Yeah.
They don't have comments, so.
Thank you for correcting, so, but there's essentially been no feedback from any other board or department within the town other than, there's not a lot of substance here, so we don't really have enough information. So, and other than it meets zoning, I don't know what other feedback we would be able to have at this point in time either, so.
Just one clar, just one clarifying point. So all three lots in question are zoned as commercial, correct?
Uh, it's the mixed use.
Mixed use, okay.
It's the Wildwood.
Wildwood, that's what I thought, Wildwood mixed use, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so this plan would have nothing to do with changing the, the mixed use nature of this property, or the covenant associated with the property.
Right, they probably will not build this, but it had to be, cuz they have to do that freezing.
Yep, it gives you the option.
Right.
I understand that, so. Comments from the public? Or if anybody wants to come look more closely at what they have displayed up here, you're welcome to come up and look.
I just don't want any commercial property there.
Sorry, if you do wanna speak, you do need to come to the podium and.
Hi, I'm Beverly. I don't like any of the commercial buildings there. I moved there because I liked all the smaller buildings.
The, the plan, the original plan for the property was that they would be mixed use buildings, where they would be three or four stories high with commercial on the ground floor, and then apartments or condos or something up above. So it would be mostly, most of the floor space would be residential, but there'd hopefully be shops or something that would be of use for the people living there. That was the original plan, and what the zoning calls for at this time.
I think the last meeting we had back in November, no one wanted this.
Yeah.
That was a general consensus.
I think the, the talk of rezoning, the issue was, what it boiled down to is the number of buildings, that if we were to say, okay, build condos, they wanted nineteen, and I was hearing ten or eleven from the residents. I actually think you could make a nice plan with twelve, but going above that, I think would be a problem. It's my opinion. But I, we also heard very loud and clear that you'd like to have a big cohesive park space. I think that was the, the consensus of the residents, that if, if they could get that, and then buildings around it that weren't too dense, that that would be something that the residents would agree with. At this point, we'd be happy to move forward in that direction, but we're not going to do that unless the, the owner actually wants to move ahead as well and, and build stuff, cuz it doesn't do us any good to, to rezone it for, for that unless the, the owner is agreeing, yes, I'm, I'm willing to build that as well. So we're not, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna put this, force the new zoning on them, is, is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
All right, your last name and address? An address?
Forty-five America.
Thank you.
And, not my mail, here.
Thank you.
Okay, and the usual, good evening, Mark DeSoni. Like I said, I'm gonna ask about the bottom of that, of that site there. Is that the part that is the entrance where the, the small buildings and the real estate offices?
Yes, it's, it's the, where the fairly flat commercial buildings are. I think they're using one of them as a real estate office. There was, there was at one time a CrossFit in one of them, I think it's mostly empty.
Okay.
And it's also, it's also the, the space that's currently flat over, from there over to America Boulevard, with the big berm and the fence on top of it.
Okay. Now, it is, is it a zone, mixed commercial, mixed use? And once they come back, the seven months or so, my only question would be, would there be any other occupants in that flat length building in the future? That's all I have.
That's not really relevant to this discussion. We would love to see a business in there thriving, but that, that's nothing that we have control over.
Catherine Jersey, eleven Rodman Road. There, so if I ask a question, it's been answered, just say it has, and I'll watch it on TV, cuz I just got here. But I, I guess, I looked at the paperwork for the submission, it talked about the covenant, and I couldn't find how this actually, this proposal aligns up with that. So I'd like to know, is this something different than the original covenant?
At this point, it neither aligns or unaligns with the covenant. That's a good question. But the covenant is still there. This doesn't change that or supersede that in any way. The covenant is about what they build there. And this is, at this stage, this preliminary plan is only about a roadway and lot lines. They could still, with these lots, put in buildings compliant with the covenant. And that's really as far as we go with this. And what I believe you missed is the, the purpose of this plan, both inferred and directly stated, is that by having this preliminary plan, if they end up wanting to build something to this plan, it locks in the zoning and rules as of the time when they submitted this plan, and then it gives them another seven months to go and submit a definitive plan. So if they are, they, they apparently are concerned that zoning might change, and this protects them from any zoning changes that might come in while they might be developing more detailed plans.
Okay, that makes sense from their perspective, but from, from a resident and taxpayer, so I, I wish, I hope that you can put the covenant up with the documents cuz that sort of is part of, it's kind of part of this, so I think people should, if they're interested. But my understanding, and I, is that was sort of like, building out sections are related to this build out of commercial property. So I, I can't imagine, this doesn't have something to do with that.
Yeah, well, the, the covenant said that they had to build a certain square footage of commercial within the mixed use, and I'm, I'm not stating it very well because it, I, they'd, they had to build a certain portion of the mixed use before they could build the second half of the condo units. They went to the ZBA, and in my opinion, the ZBA made a very poor ruling that the ZBA understood it differently from how it was actually written, but ultimately allowed them to build just the commercial, not mixed use, and we ended up with what we have today. And I believe they also, due to a mathematical mistake, gave them smaller square footage of commercial than they were supposed to under the covenant. But that's water under the bridge at this point because they have now built all of the condos, so that any phasing part of the covenant is now moot because it's done. So what matters now is what both the zoning and the covenant say is allowed to be built as far as mixed use in this property.
So as the covenant and the zoning now, what, what is allowed there?
What we are expecting to see is, if they're moving forward without going through a rezoning process, would be mixed use, which would be commercial on the ground floor and residential up above.
That's what's currently allowed there.
That's currently what's allowed there.
And we would be holding to that, because that's our zoning.
Yes.
And we, so, okay, so that's kinda what I understood, and I, so I definitely want to strongly state that we are a community, and we have zoning, and we've agreed to that, and we do have a process to change it. But I, I really, since I've lived here since two thousand and four, I have very rarely seen a zoning change coming from a community process. It's coming from a developer, and we're a smarter community than that. We need to sit down and decide what we want, and please, I'm imploring and begging, do not keep doing that. That, that is not how we should be behaving as a community. I am not opposed to changing zoning, I am opposed to changing it because a developer asked, because we don't win as a community when that happens, we don't. We know it's took, I've been here about fifteen years, it's taken about ten of that fifteen years that we've all now recognized that residential costs us more as a community. A developer makes money, I'm not against developers, I work in construction. I, I am for my community, so let me be clear. Residential costs us more, they make their money, they're gone. We now pay more for those services that residential uses. That's why we agreed to have a balance of this, because the commercial doesn't use as much resources. It's a critical thing, financial for the community, and it's also critical to me as a community that we are a community, we behave that way. So I, I just, please implore you not to be even entertaining changing zoning cuz a developer asks, let's please just follow a process for our community. Thank you.
Yeah, so. Yes?
Hi, my name is Venkateswaran Muthyala, I'm from two twenty-six America Boulevard. Happy Valentine's to everyone. I think we talked about the same thing in the last meeting as well. We've been talking about the green area. I know that we're talking about now, you have three lots. Earlier when we talked about, we talked about the whole thing as one phase. Now, I think, this time we're talk, we are hearing new things like Lot One, Lot Two, Lot Three. Maybe we're not seeing the last time. Now we are focusing on Lot Three. However, if I considering Lot One, Lot Two, and Lot Three, we're still missing the green area, which we have been requesting from the.
The discussions that we had, starting in November, about rezoning are essentially the alternative to what they are taking a step toward tonight. The alternative would be for us to agree on zoning that provides the residents something they want, a nice open space, and the developer something they want, which is to build condos, and with some balance that actually works for both. If we can find that, that would be great. But in, without that, they're gonna look at what they can do with the current zoning, which is mixed use, and if they go with that, I, I don't see any requirement that they have additional open space or anything like that, so, you know.
Is that from residents, can we suggest, or should, no, at this?
You can suggest to them, but, but at this point, we don't have, as long as they are building things that are compliant with the zoning and the covenant as it exists today, they're allowed to do that. And, so that, that's why we're here tonight, so.
Hi, my name is Venkateswara Meruwa. I'm one of the trustee of the Freedom Village Condominium Association. So some of the association trustees, other associations trustees also, they were asking why there was very short notice given to the residents to participate in this meeting. The letter says February fifth, but some of the people got only yesterday. So we were discussing in a WhatsApp group, emailing, we were emailing, and we were discussing, it was very short notice given to the residents.
That's a good question. What is the legal requirement for notification on a preliminary subdivision plan?
Seven days, and we sent them out seven days prior.
Okay.
No one got it on time. I think someone, some, some residents, they may not have opened their mailbox also. Normally they check during weekends.
Is it required that the notification be received or sent, seven days?
Could it be sent, I believe.
So.
If people don't check their mailbox, is it, if it was delivered but not checked, that's.
No, but even then, today is February fourteenth, and people might be having the, many plans for the evening. That is one thing, my, another question is same, are we having green space or not?
There is no open space specified on this plan. There is no zoning requirement for it under the current zoning. The idea of open space is something we talked about with a rezoning proposal. That is not what we are talking about tonight.
Okay, so that means the existing play, place they are, they are going to construct in, again, multiple phases?
We don't know what they're going to build, but this simply splits the property into three lots and locks in their right to proceed under the current zoning.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I do wanna say, I apologize for the short notice. We should try to do a better job in the future. It's a little hectic in Town Hall right now. We have a, a interim planning director, or an assistant planning director who's filling in, so we're, we're working on bringing our staffing up to speed, and that will help with that.
Yeah, but on, so on the town's website, you can sign up for, just to subscribe when any meetings are posted for the planning board or various boards and committees. Part of the notification process is, the abutters list was supplied to us by the assessor's office, so for folks that did not receive that, it's, it's done by the assessor's office, they generate the list. And then it's also posted with the clerk's office. But if you go to the town website, you can sign up there for alerts, for meetings, when agendas are posted, things like that.
But I also would point out, the abutters list is based on owners, not residents, which may not, if somebody is renting, then they would not receive notice.
Right.
Which is unfortunate, but that's just the way the rules work.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Kowalczek, I live at ninety-nine America. So I support what my other neighbor was saying around the mixed use being the plan of record, and I'm not concerned about that staying the plan of record. I know some neighbors are. Even though there's not an open space designation, there is kind of a limit to the footprint of that building that leaves some open space. And when I was at the previous meeting where we were looking at the plans for the new zoning, that was residential condos, there was loud feedback from the room where more folks were able to attend, that it was just way too dense. So I'm in support of there being condos and a zoning change, but only if the change is something that works for the neighborhood, and it's something that's desirable. So I think a green space, lower, lower density of condos would be the conditions where I would support the zoning change.
Okay. I, I hope the applicant takes that back, and they discuss that as an option, but. I don't wanna spend too much time on, on the zoning, cuz it is technically off topic, but.
My name is Paul Calamia, I live at ten John Hancock Drive. Specific to this plan that's been shown, what are the implications of subdividing into three lots? Why, why is that happening, and what does that mean for something remotely like this plan or anything moving forward, cuz I'm not clear on that?
Well, the two things this does is it creates a roadway, which would be, provide access and frontage for future buildings. And it, it'll, it creates separate lots, which means they could develop the different lots separately. And so if they wanted, it, it does imply that any building that they are considering would not cross one of those lot lines. But other than that, it doesn't really mean very much.
That we can discern, right?
There's just not enough information on, at this stage for us to tell you that, and I don't know what they've decided.
And so does the roadway require at least two lots, one on each side, or?
Um.
Are they independent facts?
I am not a lawyer, so I can't tell you what the minimum requirements are for a subdivision. But I believe to apply under the subdivision rule, it's, you'd have to subdivide. So I think they would have to at least make two lots, and they chose to make three. I don't know for sure.
Okay, thank you.
But just one point, I mean, this has been through technical review, correct? And it's been.
An informal technical review.
And, and there were no noted technical deficiencies with their proposal to subdivide it in this manner, right?
No.
So that means that.
There were no comments, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much everyone.
It means at a high level, it meets the zoning requirements that it's subject to, okay.
And we don't have enough further information to make useful comment.
Hi, I'm Sunny Tam, living at the two hundred America Boulevard. I just want to understand, like, the purpose of tonight's meeting. I mean, like you say, if, if they go with their original plan, they don't need any one of us approval. And I'm not clear, are they going forward with the new zoning? And if they do, at that point, do they need our inputs? Do they need our approval, and what is the process here?
The, the process here is, they're apparently concerned that we might rezone this property.
We being the town.
We, we being the town.
Yeah.
Without their agreement to the rezoning. Which conceivably we could, I, I don't see us being likely to do that without a lot of discussion, and they would have a lot of notice because it would have to go through town meeting.
But, but they proposing to rezone, I mean, but they don't, they have not initiated yet, right? I'm saying, the zoning request, or, or the town will have to.
They actually initiated the zoning discussions back in the fall.
Yeah.
In, in some loose connection to the donation of land for the public's safety building. I, I don't know, I, I wasn't involved with those discussions, so. Um I I don't know, I I wasn't involved with those discussions, so I don't know to what extent it was uh connected. Or it just arose because the same people were there.
Yeah.
Um but the the discussion was to build, to change it from mixed use to building condos. And the feedback from the residents was, we can work with that, but you can't build as many buildings as we want, as you want. Because we want this open space.
But but are we at that stage yet, or?
And because there was not agreement, i- i- it appears the developer doesn't want, doesn't see it as in their interest to move forward with. The zoning with the density that would be acceptable to the residents, so they're looking at this instead, or they're maybe looking at both in parallel. I don't I don't know what their strategy is, but at this point, um the town could look at rezoning this. Based on what the residents said at that meeting without the developers' input.
Okay.
Uh we have to look at the the covenant and see if if that works uh from a legal standpoint, from what the town has agreed to there.
Mm-hmm.
And but you know, we we haven't talked about do actually doing that at all.
Zoning changes have to be voted on a town meeting, right Preston?
Yes.
So any proposed change to zoning would would have to be presented either May or November. And all the townspeople of Ashland, you know, have to approve that change in zoning, so it's.
But but that might not happen, right? I mean.
No, I at at this point, I don't think we're gonna have, I just what based on the schedule and and everything. Even if we really wanted to, I don't see that we would get a rezoning on this for the May town meeting. So it'd be November, by which time they'd already have to be in a definitive based on tonight's plan anyway.
But they they might have built with their original plans.
They they could decide to go ahead and build with their original plans.
Okay.
Uh they have had um that they had a site plan on this in like two thousand five, I think, or so. When I was very first on the board, that two horseshoe shaped buildings.
Yeah.
Um that um while that site plan has lapsed, I expect if they brought that back to the board. Because that still meets the current zoning and covenant. Uh and if they said, we wanna build this, I it would probably be a very um straightforward process at this point.
Hmm, okay.
Catherine Jersey eleven Roden Road, I have a my question is kind of follow up. So I I believe by our subdivision by law three forty-four, that's what this meeting is, you have to have this, right? It you it says you have to have a public meeting, it's not actually hearing.
Right.
But what I didn't get, and I apologize, cause I know you guys spend a lot of time doing this and reading this. So I did not read the whole thing, but like what happens from this meet, like you hear us. But what happens, right, from this hearing, and then you said it's not really to approve this, but it kinda seems like it is, so I just. I mean, again, you can tell me, go home and read it, and I'll try to figure out, but I just, I I'm kinda confused of this, exactly the outcome of this.
Okay.
This one.
What is most likely to happen tonight is I expect the planning board will likely say, this meets zoning. Um this doesn't conflict with the covenant, because they're not saying what they're building. So we don't really have grounds to say no, and uh so we're probably going to approve this.
And what are we, and we are approving a subdivision?
No, we're a preliminary plan. Um and the preliminary plan doesn't give them the right to go out, get building permits, or do anything on the ground. What it means is that when they turn around and say, okay, now we're gonna build our do our definitive plan. And that has a lot of money invested in engineering, whereas this was probably relatively cheap to uh bring forward. Um they know the zoning and subdivision rules can't be changed from underneath them. Uh as long as they submit the definitive plan within seven months. Uh and we uh we could get the exact date of when that would have to be based on when this was submitted, but um. Uh but so it in this case, um it's simply protecting them in case the town decides to make changes. Which I don't think we are going to be doing within the timeframe that they have. Um in some cases, a developer could say, I'm looking at making this subdivision. Here's a sketch of what I'm thinking of doing, is my my preliminary plan. What does the planning board think of this and get some useful feedback from the planning board? So that when they come back with their definitive plan, they really know, yes, this, we've spent our money on engineering, which is expensive. But we've gone in the right direction based on what the planning board wants. And they're not providing enough information for us to give them that kind of feedback. So it's it's not as a particularly useful process in this case, in my opinion.
Well, and so that's what I was kinda gathering, so are we are we jumping out of lanes to try to finagle something? Because it I I just have concerns, because it doesn't seem, it seems like we accepted. We're making decisions that should have been on maybe farther along, or something, that that wasn't entirely clear. So I I guess it's just, I I that, I don't know, I don't, I'm not convinced that.
Ba- based on what's being presented to that to us at this point, and based on the technical review, is there, you're not a lawyer. Is there a legal basis for us to not approve this?
Not that I know of.
No.
So.
But that's kind of.
What they're doing is locking in the zoning, they wanna, if they go ahead and go forward with this, they wanna know that for seven months, that they can work on a plan that fits on this.
Yeah, I just, we.
Like, we're we're not finagling or jumping over hoops to say yes to this.
Okay.
It it's it's like, there's a tech, there's a technical, it it needs to fit inside a box, right?
Yeah.
And and we've and we've, you know, done that cursory technical review and say, okay, it fits inside the box. Nope, we're not jumping out of order, doing anything, trying to say yes to anything, it's. We've been asked to do something, we've done the diligence that we can based on the limited info that we're provided. That meets our requirements, what they have to give us, and so they're asking for us to make this call, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, and that's, cause it seems like you're struggling about lack of information when people ask, but yet you're asked to make a decision. So what I'm hearing then is our process needs to be fixed. Our, like, when we're looking at zoning, it's not always just zoning, some of it are these technicalities.
Yeah.
And then.
Uh ju- just to be clear, I believe the preliminary subdivision plan process is in state law.
It is.
So I don't think we really have the choice to say you to, I I I don't think we can make it more stringent in this case. I I think we're kinda stuck.
Hmm, okay. So then this, the three forty-four dot sixteen talks, this is our bylaw three forty-four dash sixteen. Before approval of plan by the planning board, said board shall also in proper cases require the plan to show a park or parks suitably located for playground, recreational purposes, or for providing light and air block. It goes on and on, and and so maybe that has to be your later part, maybe it's now, I don't know, but we were told we can't have open space, and maybe we can. I mean, so I, three forty-four is our our subdivision by law. I know that, like I said, I tried to get ahead of educating myself, you guys shouldn't be the only ones doing it, you're volunteers too. Um.
Great. So that these plans were reviewed based on uh three forty-four, section seven preliminary plans. So that that criteria, like that checklist. Um and so the initial submission on January third.
Didn't meet it, I saw that, it was corrected, right?
Right, exactly. Um so I know it's it's hard to think about it at such like a high level. Like, we're just talking about cutting up land in different ways, because you wanna know what's gonna go there.
Yeah.
And and even from the department's standpoint, they're like, well, what's gonna be there, is there gonna be a building? Like, we don't, we don't know. At at this preliminary stage, we're literally just looking at a piece of paper with lots cut up in different ways. And like, we should stress the fact that an approval of a preliminary plan is is non-binding in the sense that they have to follow up with a definitive plan within seven months.
Yeah.
It's on them to follow up with whatever their next steps are. It simply locks in the zoning and the rules and regulations um that are currently right now. Um.
And I think it said something in that section about, I and again, I can be, cause some of it's a little technical, that you actually did have to show the lots, and I don't believe this does. On the on the preliminary approval process, so it's a weird thing, I agree, and that's why I was a little confused. So they get preliminary, you guys did a review, said they didn't meet it, they resubmitted, now we're here, that's part of the process. But I thought it said you had to show the lots, the actual division.
It does.
Does show the lots.
It shows the actual, okay.
Yeah.
There's three, three, three lots.
Okay.
But this appears colored, and so that helps, the plans obviously that were submitted weren't, so um. But they're proposing to create three lots in a cul-de-sac.
So, all right, so that, I get it, you guys are following the process, and I'm happy about that. And then what about the open space? Because I think I'm pretty sure I heard, we can't do anything about that, and I'm thinking it might say by our bylaw that in fact we can ask for that. So though it may be kinda down the road, it's kinda related to this, cause you asked for public comment, so.
Um, that is a good point. Uh um I I think I will turn around and uh advise the applicant to look at that. Uh and that we will review that uh should a definitive plan come. Um frankly, I I don't think they have spent a lot of time on this, and I would like to follow suit and also not spend a lot of time on it, to be to be blunt. Um because I I don't think, uh I I don't think it's that likely that this will actually result in s- uh something changing on the ground. I think this is a process that uh is unlikely to result in that, in my opinion, I could be mistaken. Um I kinda hope I'm mistaken, I I don't really like the feel of this. Um with where the road is and how the lots are laid out, um it doesn't feel all that conducive to uh what I have pictured for mixed use. In this area, but maybe they've got something that will surprise me.
And and so that part, we're at the part you can't do anything about, yeah, okay.
Exactly. Yeah.
So so just, just to cut, just to try to connect to some of the stuff you're referencing, so you referenced three forty-four sixteen, right?
Yeah.
Which talks about open space.
Yeah.
Um I I think that section is specifying that in the in on definitive plans, that before the planning board approves a definitive plan.
Yeah.
Um we we can require the plan to show park or parks suitably located.
Yeah.
Right, so, I mean, I I I see your your point there, but it's it's talking about what a definitive plan needs to have, we're on a preliminary.
It's after this, no, I know, I I know, I just, because it's sort of wrapped up, I I'm, I did hear said at this meeting, we can't ask for open space. So I said, oh, I think we can, and that's all, yeah.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you're paying attention, and I'm just trying to acknowledge to you that we're, you know, we're trying to navigate it as well, you know.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mark?
Okay, thank you. Bring the, I'll bring up a couple of general questions. First of all, it, you may not know this as zoning, but are zoning grandfathered, grandfathered, are there any sort of, for reasons to go forth on?
Zoning is grandfathered as of the time the the permitting process begins for any given project.
And would this be one of them?
And and this this is starting, uh the the submission of this uh means that as of the date this was submitted, the zoning is grandfathered in. As long as they continue on with the timeline for the submission process, that's the purpose of this submission.
Okay, and for notifications, any board, are they under the same rules of notification standards?
Uh notifications for different types of processes are different for different boards, and I it it's a very general question, but.
Okay, well, for sending out seven days, is basically sending out from town hall here, through the general mail, certified letters and all that with seven days. Do you count Sunday as a day?
Yeah, it's uh it's seven calendar days.
So yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sunday would count as a day.
Okay.
And and this isn't, to clarify, this is not sent certified, because we don't have that kind of money. Um it was sent like regular mail seven days prior, and depending on like your question for notification. So for instance, like special permits, those are um also require like a legal advertisement in the newspaper. This did not, it was just seven days prior.
Okay, and since I am one of them, the notifications online, and for all people who don't have computers, it's kinda tough. But I do get my notifications through the online town hall notify me, sort of civil listings and stuff like that. But in people who don't have computers, and don't have a way of coming in, to talk and to ask questions, it's kinda hard to keep up with what's going on. This is like a last minute tonight meeting sort of thing. So I I kinda think with the people that are here, that are living there, they're kinda hearing this and saying, what happened? How come we weren't exactly pictured in my mind what we were seeing, and now something's going on? That's neither here nor there for me, cause I'm there from the other side of town, and I and I I'd like to speak as a town person, but as a citizen, not a town person, but a citizen. Um did it come up with something else too? How many? Sections, there's three sections in this in this plan. And how would would the developer know through on property and site? That square feet of footage for each lot?
Yeah, it's on the plan. It it says on the plan, he uh says lot one has the square footage and the acres, and lot two, square footage and acres, and so forth.
Okay, I'm I'm looking over the belt, the old boss over shoulder, looking at his paper. Just make sure he doesn't think I'm peeping. Okay, so it's it's squared off, it's basically property squared off. Two sides and then the uh the yellow buildings.
See where it says lot three, Mark? Top lot or?
Top lot, yeah, well.
Lot three.
Bottom, middle by Chestnut Street.
Lot three, three points, three six acres, lot two, um forty thousand square feet, lot one, forty-eight thousand square feet.
Yeah, I'm looking in the bottom where that green is. That's where I'm looking, right next to that, that's square, that that's squared off by Chestnut Street entrance.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
And it is squared off for site lot dimensions, right? For what he's gonna work on.
I I don't really follow what your point is.
Is anything gonna be put into place of what's squared off or crowded in the middle or behind each of the buildings? That would be my question.
There is nothing here that says what, anything about building new buildings. It is uh just a roadway and two new lot lines to partition it into three lots.
But but as Preston said earlier, if they're subdividing the space in this manner, it would stand to reason that any proposed building that they would propose to build would fit inside. And not cross the the lines of the of the lots they've created, right?
Okay.
But that's all we know about the building.
Just, just deduction, that's not, right?
So not to surprise the the residents, the uh condo owners that live in there. They're not gonna be seeing an expansion of a lot three, four, and five by America Boulevard, and up in that end, how it expanded out. It's just gonna be shaped, what's gonna be shaped in there, and not a big construction block.
Hi, Rebecca Kowalczek again, I have a couple of quick questions for you.
Okay.
Uh so is the subdivision easily reversible, or if it's approved, does it mean that the original building plans they have are somewhat void, cause they won't work with the subdivision?
No, this is a preliminary subdivision plan.
Right.
Which means they are under. Which means they are under no requirement to go forward and submit a definitive plan.
Ah, got it, okay, so it's just kinda, okay.
So, this, this gives them an option within the next six or seven months to submit a definitive plan.
Okay.
Um, and they can, or they can say, oh, well, we want to instead submit this plan, which is something they had already submitted, or they say, we want this zoning change, and.
But if they, if they don't submit definitive plans on this subdivi- proposed subdivision, preliminary subdivision, if they don't submit definitive plans in seven months, is. This preliminary subdivision still valid, or is it, it is then void?
Expires.
And if, if it does, so if this, I'm assuming we won't have another opportunity to weigh in if it gets approved, so I'm just asking. If they move forward with approving this subdivision, if you approve it, and then they move forward with it, does that then mean that the plans for the horseshoe building are void, because they won't work with the subdivision?
Yeah, the, the horseshoe buildings would not work.
Okay.
If they, if they go to a definitive subdivision plan.
Got it.
If, if they go back to a, if, if they come forward with a definitive subdivision plan, there will be new hearings at the planning board. Uh, basically as if they're starting a process, it's just that the date of the zoning and rules is based on when this was submitted, not when that is submitted.
Okay, that's perfect.
Um, but if they choose not to, they're welcome to submit something completely different, they just don't have the zoning lock in if they do that.
Okay, is it okay if I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Okay, can, are, so the chief complaint I heard about the mi- current mixed zoning at the last meeting that was making folks feel pressured to approve the residential. Was, uh, the height concerns, so from a town standpoint, do we have an opportunity to put a height restriction on that property? Since it's kinda clear that they're, the, they're not really looking to move forward with the original plans? Because I think most folks would appreciate having that mixed use commercial, it's just the. Height of the building was a big pain point.
Um. The. Within this process, they have now locked in the zoning, so if they go forward with a definitive plan based on this.
Hmm.
We would not have the option to change any rules.
Okay.
So whatever, whatever height rules there are in this zone, the Wildwood mixed use zone, would be what is.
Right.
Any proposed building would have to fall within.
I just, I brought that up, because it sounded like earlier, maybe there was an opportunity for us to propose revisiting that, but, uh, I'm not clear.
We, we could sit down and talk about.
Yeah.
What do we want, and consider the possibility of rezoning this.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, and look and see if we could do that, even if it's not what the developer would like to see. Um, and, um, maybe that would be a useful process, maybe it wouldn't be, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, that answer too.
I haven't really thought about that much, and maybe, um, that's a mistake.
Okay, and then one last thing I was gonna ask, if maybe for future, uh, meetings for this community, if we could get fourteen days notice, even though it's more than the legal requirement, I think that would resolve a lot of the concerns.
Um, I can't promise, but we can try.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
So, real quick, just to, just to chime in, for this subdivision, they really didn't even have to draw those buildings in, right?
Well, they only drew the buildings that are already there, they did have to draw those in, because they're already there.
Okay, because they're existing, those are the existing buildings, so.
Uh, but there is no requirement that their definitive plan retain those buildings, that their definitive plan could be to tear those down and build something different.
Okay, so the.
And that would still be a.
Those buildings aren't any permanent thing, they're just, we're just doing the lot lines, doing the lot lines, basically.
I hope not. Though they assured us when they built them, that they were, uh, engineered so that they could go with the site plan that they had at the time, which had residential above that. The planning board never approved commercial buildings without residential above it. Uh, theoretically, they could build that residential now on top of that, with simply going and getting a building permit, because they've already started that.
I just mentioned that because people were, were pointing, looking at the, you know, some were mentioning the layout there, but that's just.
Yeah.
What's there, it's not anything to do with the lot lines.
Yeah, the, the layout. The layout that's approved, uh, you can see how the, there, the two buildings on one side and one on the other, and s- there's a, there's supposed to be, uh, four, not three. And there's supposed to be, um, several, a, a number of residential stories on top of that, and, um. We have nice looking renderings and all kinds of stuff that they didn't build.
But, but we're really, for, but we're looking at the road and the lot lines, right?
That's all we're looking at tonight.
All that other buildings and stuff, it's either already there.
Yep.
So we're just focused on dividing the lot and putting a road in.
And as soon as we're done with this, we have another one just like it on a different property, so.
Um, my name is Maria, Maria Ho, I'm from, uh, two hundred American Boulevard, um, I just wanna voice my opinion about like the, this mixed use proposal. Um, I don't know whether that has been approved, or is this already a goal, but, uh, as, as a resident, I, I just not really for this proposal. For like mixed use bringing commercial in the community, uh, especially you're gonna bring in more traffic, uh, people from Mausai, you know, we have kids in the neighborhood. It is, it's gonna just bring down the value of our home, you know, I'm as a homeowner, I, I want to preserve the value of my property. So, um, that, that's why I, I, I'm, I, I really don't like this idea about bringing commercial in the, in the community. Yeah, that, that's my opinion.
Uh, hi, yeah. Oh, so, I, I see initially, in the initial plans, uh, there is, uh, actually they promised, uh, to have a, o- open space or free space. And now when it is not possible, uh, uh, legal standpoint, uh, do associations have any, uh, legal option, uh, against the builder?
I, I cannot advise you on what your legal rights are, um, on a private dispute.
Okay.
And I'm not a lawyer, so I couldn't advise you anyway.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, one more thing is, um, there are, uh, like, it's my personal opinion, like, uh, nearly three hundred, more than three hundred families are, uh, uh, units are there. So there will be lot of kids and all, uh, town planning people who are approved in different phases, like almost around twenty years. Uh, why they haven't, uh, thought about, uh, allocating a small space for, uh, uh, kids play area kind of thing? Why we need to go like a three or four miles, uh, to take our kids, uh, for a park space, uh, when we are already, people are tired, coming from offices in the evening? Why they have to be at homes? Why we have to physically take so many, so many people have, like a hundred families are there, they have to take their kids, uh, uh, how many, how many vehicles are being used? So that kind of, uh, thinking, I think, uh, town planning should look at when they are building communities in future, they should make this as a reference. Uh, it's not like a plain, uh, approval, like builder has, uh, builder has done, has, he, he, he was a visionary from your standpoint. He's donating, uh, free land to, uh, the town, but what the, are the residents happy? Are the kids growing in a good environment, these are the things that, uh, as a town planning professionals, it's when we are building a city community, it's going for fifty to seventy years. So these are the things, uh, you should, uh, definitely look into when you're giving approvals, uh, that would be my advice to the town planning.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Catherine Jersey, eleven Rodman Road, um, I don't know if this was talked about before, and the plans on the website didn't have it, and it doesn't specifically say, you know, that. Other departments have to issue in writing, but it's, you, you would think that, um. They would sort of weigh in, so it was like Board of Health, the Fire Department, and all that, and I, has that, has this gone through that part of the process?
The departments informally reviewed the plans.
Okay.
They didn't have comments, because it, like, they're preliminary in nature, so, but they were informally reviewed.
So you, you know, it's going way back, but this section, other than dividing it into three splits, the original horseshoe thing and the covenant and all that was, that was all. Decided before they even started any of the construction, or was that a later process, right, before they built any of the units?
Right, after they, after they had built, uh, approximately half of the condo buildings that are now built. Uh, they went through a site plan review for two big horseshoe buildings back in, I believe, two thousand and five. Uh, and, um, they looked like nice buildings, uh, but then they went to the ZBA and said, can we get away with not actually doing this? And the ZBA essentially gave them a ruling that said yes, and we ended up with what we have today.
I was just saying for the timeline, because it makes a difference if they're throwing this on everybody right at the end, or if it was proposed way back.
In theory, everyone buying those units should have known what the zoning was there, and what the rough idea of what was expected in that area was.
Alright.
Uh, because it was both, the plan for multi-story mixed use buildings there, uh, was the plan before any of the condos, uh, were built.
Okay.
So.
And that was, that's the zoning, so.
So it, it should have been communicated to, uh, potential customers, I don't know to what extent it was. Um, it's, uh, it's always challenging to get enough information when you're considering buying somewhere as to what all the future is, might hold.
Okay, this is Venkatesh Muthiyala, uh, from two twenty-six American Boulevard, uh, my question is that, I know that we're talking about this phase eight, or, or that is the three lots.
Hmm.
Uh, and then now we are talking about third lot, I believe, um, but we are not looking at the big picture of the three lots. Um, since we are missing the opportunity of the, when you look at the three lots, that is a big space, uh, any plan or approval, things will change when you look at the small thing. And now we're looking at the lot three, again, maybe in future, you'll be looking at lot two, lot one, and then, I don't know, the, maybe the, maybe the.
We're, we're not looking at any one particular lot, we are looking at the, at all three lots and the road that they have drawn on here. The only thing about lot three is it already has buildings there, and. We've actually had a lot of discussions that are technically unrelated to the topic, because. We've talked a lot about the history of this, that involves the horseshoe shaped buildings, the, the ZBA ruling, uh, discussions of alternate zoning. It's all part of the big picture, and I, I've been very liberal in letting people talk about the big picture, that includes all of these things. But when it comes down to what action the planning board takes, really all we're looking at is. They're drawing a couple of lines on paper and, uh, saying, we might put a road here. And that's really all we're talking about.
So is there any, like, in future, maybe, you know, we'll get a concrete plan, because most of the time what happens is, people doesn't know, the residents doesn't know, how it's going to look like. Right, so, I mean, I don't know, whatever it is, if there is a current plan or even a future.
Yeah, this, this doesn't give them the right to build anything, even if we approve this tonight.
Whatever is approved, so.
It gives, it says, we expect you to come back within seven months, I think of when this was submitted, not of tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And, which is why I said six to seven months, because we've already used up some of that time, so it's more like six months.
Hmm.
And, um. And give a more detailed plan that does show, uh, buildings and what they're actually doing, and then we have a big public process. Uh, with all of you coming back and providing feedback of, this is good, this is bad, please change this, and, and we start working through all of that. And that, that is gonna be a much more involved process, there's gonna be, uh, the town's gonna hire engineers to review things. Uh, Board of Health and is gonna look at it from a health and safety standpoint, Fire Department's gonna look at it to make sure that, uh. If all kinds of horrible things happen, that they're gonna be able to do their job effectively, uh, list of considerations goes on and on and on.
Yeah.
Um, and it will be a, you know, a definitely, a, a good number of nights here, and a lot of work from a lot of people, uh, with a lot of public input.
Thank you.
So this, this tonight is, is really a, a just a, yeah, you can do this within the next six months or so. And, uh, be based on the way the zoning and rules were at the beginning of the year, as opposed to the middle of the year, in the event that they change.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I, that said, I, I think we've, we've beaten the death, the, the history of this and all of that, so I, I want to. For the rest of this, if there is any rest of this, um, really keep it to this plan.
Okay.
Um, so, um, uh, but I don't know, do we have anything else?
No, I mean, just, just for posterity, based on the preliminary views, there's no technical deficiencies with the proposed preliminary. Plan before us, correct?
Yes.
Right. Um, yeah, and, yeah, we haven't reviewed sightlines or traffic impacts, which is something that would be part of a definitive plan. Uh, particularly with, uh, the entrance on the Chestnut Street, um, but of course, since we don't know what you're planning on building, we don't know what the traffic flow would be. Uh, but that obviously would be something we would look at, um, yeah, there, there's all kinds of things we would look at.
In the next phase.
In the, in the next phase, if they submit a next phase, which is completely at their discretion.
Up to them.
Okay, I believe you have a draft decision, um, do you wanna pass that along?
It's just three copies of the same.
Okay, so, um, we have three copies, so I'll let each of you take a quick look at it. Um, there's not really much to the, um, the decision, um. It's, it's basically, we would say, um, we, we could, um. Uh, agree on modifications to the plan, if there's something we see that we think needs to be modified, uh, at this stage, I don't see that, um. Uh, you know, I, I don't think there's enough information to make that kind of recommendation or, or decision.
I would, I would agree, you know, tend to.
Something just like heard to me that I wanted to ask about, does each subdivision require mixed use, or can two of the subdivisions be residential and one be commercial, or something like that?
I, I would have to go back and look at the covenant, I believe the, uh, entire area is mixed use.
Okay.
I, I don't think they could build condos on one and then mixed use on another.
Okay, is that something we can confirm before the approval?
Um. It would be something we would confirm before we would give any approval that has buildings on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would, that would, we'd be very careful to be very clear on that in the definitive stage. I didn't review those, the, the details of that for this, because frankly, it's not relevant, because they're not putting any buildings there. So, um. Um. So at this point, um. I don't see any reason not to simply, uh, approve this, and let them have their zoning lock in, and then.
Work on it.
Then if they, if they come back with a definitive plan, um, we can go into it then.
Should it say subdivision here, approve the preliminary subdivision plan?
That came directly from council, I can, I can certainly add subdivision.
That, that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Maybe you say it came from, it's council approved. Okay, that's fine.
Uh. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary plan, so move?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes three zero. Alright, I'm gonna, um, hold off on doing, uh, signatures on this, uh, because I wanna move ahead to, uh, Village at Clock Town, where we have. Another, uh, preliminary plan, um, I believe this is essentially the same idea.
Yes, we have, we've broken out the, uh, lot from the municipal area, uh, it has to be an A and R on that, uh, G and H has given a, it's a land court. So there has to be a special survey for doing that, to break that out, and, uh, I don't know that the town has approved our fee for doing that, so. When that's been done, we'll go forward with the A and R for that.
Why, why is it in, I'm sorry, why is it in land court, what?
It, it is land court property, so.
Yeah. Some, so, and Massachusetts has really weird.
Because of the donations to the town?
No, 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 no.
Okay, good.
Massachusetts has really weird land law.
Okay.
Where some land is in the state. Where some land is in the state, but not all land, is registered in land court. Which means that if you want to do something with that land, like subdivide it, you have to go through a different process with land court than with the land that's not registered with land court.
And what determine what's in land court versus not is history?
Weird history, yes.
Historical stuff.
And I'm not a lawyer, but I picked this up from my time on the planning board and it makes me think some lawyers must have been insane to create this system this way. And I don't know.
Got it. Okay, so, so this particular parcel is in land court?
Right.
Which means it's subject to.
Extra bureaucracy.
Extra bureaucracy, okay.
But it meets all the, this little division meets all the requirements, right?
So, just to step through it, I did look at the, these, this before. The, the preliminary subdivision plan, correct Preston? Did I said that correct? It has, it's breaking this piece of land into three pieces, correct? Lot one is to the right of a proposed cul-de-sac road. Lot two is to the left of that cul-de-sac road. And then continues into that elongated piece. And lot three is that square in the center, correct? Okay.
And it's presumed that there will be an approval not required carving out of what is shown as lot three. So that by the time they would come back with this as a definitive plan, that would no longer be part of this plan. Is that correct? Okay.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm sorry, one more second. So, say that again.
Lot three.
In the center.
They are in the process of donating to the town.
Okay, so that entire parcel, lot three is what is being donated to the town for public safety. Okay.
So by the time we get it back, that's probably not even gonna be part of the other lot.
Presumably in the definitive plan, that will no longer be part of the plan.
So it'll be dividing the leftovers into two.
Yeah. So we're all on the same page on that.
Yeah. Not being a lawyer either.
I am concerned about wetlands on this site. There has been no wetlands review at this stage. I have not reviewed whether the wetlands impinge on the proposed roadway. And I'm just, I just want that stated for the record, meaning please put that in the minutes. That this is not something we have reviewed. So.
There's a great deal of wetlands and there's a great deal of topography on these parcels of land.
Yep.
A lot.
Oh yeah, I, I've walked on or very near part of the upper part of this.
Roughly thirty feet.
Oh, I thought it was more than that, actually, frankly. It's, it's awfully steep in the back. If there were more snow, I'd want my sled there. Actually, too steep, it's too steep for that.
From a, from a technical perspective, there's been a preliminary review by any folks in, in town that.
The exact same process, yeah. It was actually the same meeting.
Got it.
Yep.
And the conclusion was the same, there were.
No comments.
No comments and then no known technical deficiencies with this proposal?
No.
And, and again, I, I will say for the record, I, I asked the town planner, town council and town manager and there is, there are absolutely no discussions that I am aware of within the town to change zoning on, that would affect this parcel. So I just throw that out for your own information. So locking in zoning for, you know, six months from now, I, I don't see what protection that buys you, but of course, you're here because your people have told you to be here. Probably not even your decision, but you can take that back to them for what it's worth. I believe we have a nearly identically worded draft decision. So if there's no additional public comment, just to be clear, oh, there's.
Look, three squares and you just can't find the circle.
Circle's in the middle of the cul-de-sac, actually.
Okay. Right in the middle. Good, good square off there. Okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the developer. And what's gonna be going on there? What's the major future look?
There is no indication whatsoever of what's going to go on there. We happen to know that lot three is going to be the public safety building, but there is no indication on, of that on this plan tonight.
Can, can you just remind us, Preston, what the zoning is for this parcel? Parcels, excuse me.
I'm gonna pass that off to him and.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take you there.
It's the same.
Wildwood?
Yep.
Mixed use district, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it was said that it'd be.
Which, I'm sorry, Mark.
Yeah, sorry.
Which would, which, which generally allows for mixed use and residential?
Yeah, the, the difference is I don't believe there's any covenant restrictions on this. I saw at one point last year, October, November-ish, a sketched-out plan that had a whole bunch of their four-plex condos on this property. Which, once you start looking at the slopes and the wetlands, it was obvious they could have never built probably even half that number. But, you know, that, it just gave a concept. It, it said to me, they're looking at how many condo buildings can they put on this property is essentially what it boils down to. So I, I think that's their thinking in the back room.
Got it.
Okay.
Sorry, Mark, we're just, just trying to flush it out.
Okay. Mister, who put this, you put this up here by the easel? Am I supposed to read upside down?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's really, what it boils down to is there's the lot giving, being given.
You're driving crazy. You have to read like a Mexican wall. Okay. Now, that makes even better, and I know.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Union wage. So there's one, two, maybe three, four wetlands.
Yeah, that, that property is very wet back there.
Yep. And for a public safety building, that's, that is thinking to be put up there through a town meeting cost and Mister, the, the property owner, Stafford, I think can forgive him the property, but apparently he never thought there was gonna be a swimming, swimming pools in the area. I would like to think that, that the wetlands would be a stopping point before these, these, this goes through.
Yes, the, the wetlands will need to be properly delineated and reviewed by the Conservation Commission. And they will be a major factor when they come to say, we actually want to build something. The wetlands will be potentially a factor in reviewing whether or not they're able to actually put the roadway and cul-de-sac in where it's currently drawn. So, I, but they haven't really given us enough information to make that determination now. Conceivably, if, if it were highly obvious that the roadway couldn't be built because of wetlands, then we would probably reject this plan tonight. I don't see that right now, but we haven't had, done a formal review of this at, the proper detail to know.
Okay.
Say that again, Preston, about the road?
If, if the, it is possible, because there are so many wetlands on this site.
Yes.
I haven't looked at where the wetlands boundaries are and I don't, and I don't know that the wetlands boundaries as shown on this plan are the same as what they would be after they've been properly delineated.
May have to change.
So it may be that the, the wetlands may even impinge on the roadway. We don't know.
So, so I mean, that leads me down a path that says that if the road wasn't there and we were just drawing, carving it up, I, I, that leads you down the path of not being comfortable with it. I mean, if there's a road, if there's a proposed road on this preliminary subdivision plan that we're not technically confident could be there because of wetlands, because they haven't been delineated or some other factor, that leads me down the path of, of not feeling comfortable to, to approve this. Just a gut reaction, let's talk it through.
Yeah, well, then they'd have to come back and have the road in a different place when they do the definitive plan, right?
Right, but which would make it a different submission. But.
I mean.
At, at this point.
I'm not looking to be difficult. I'm not looking, I'm just saying.
No, no, I, I, I agree with your point, but my take on it is when they come back for the definitive plan, if, if they find that the wetlands mean they can't put the road where they have it now, then it's probably a new submission and they lose their grandfathering. Not that I think their grandfather is gonna gain them anything, because I don't think we're changing any rules that are gonna impact them.
Understood.
So.
So, so, so the bottom line is if they were to move forward with, towards definitive plans and the road would not work where they have proposed here, right, they would need to effectively submit.
New one.
A new definitive plan or a new preliminary subdivision plan?
They could do either. They, they are free to come and submit a definitive plan that has no bearing on what we're looking at tonight. They just, they just don't get to use the, the lock-in of zoning from when this was submitted. And if the zoning doesn't change anyway, then it makes no difference to them whatsoever, so.
Okay. Now, it was said at the very beginning about that, about the land itself. It's in land court. If land court knew there was all this wetland issues, would it be in their court?
The, the, wetlands have no bearing on whether land is in land court or not.
Catherine Jersey, eleven Rodman Road.
Did I hear that correctly, that this subdivision shows the public safety building parcel?
It does.
As part of the subdivision?
It is currently, currently showing lot three and their intention is that by the time they come back with the definitive plan, lot three, as shown on this plan, will be carved out through an approval not required process into a separate parcel. So that would change this to a two-lot subdivision instead of a three-lot subdivision.
But I went to that town meeting where we supposedly got the, and it, and I guess this, I just feel like, like I'm, you know what? If we didn't write our rules right, let developers take advantage of that, right? But if you're showing a subdivision that has land that the town kinda owns, it's not a subdivision is one thing. But the second thing is, and we are a little bit screwing the rules, when you look at that preliminary of that public meeting, it says we're supposed to talk about the details of the definitive plan. We are supposed to actually say that they have financing. So we're taking the sham, and you admit that for different reasons, and maybe that's okay, but we're, we are, we are kind of going off the rails here of the intent of that. We, we skimmed over that part, right? So it, it's, to me, my view of that is set up so this can't happen, we're, we're actually allowing it. And I, I just don't see why also on this particular thing, how a plan with town, I thought we own town properties, might be in process?
It's in process.
At this point, they still own it, so they have to put it on the plan that we're approving now because it's still part of that property.
And does that affect?
By the time they come back with a definitive one, it probably won't be part of that, so they'll have a new drawing with that off of it.
Okay, so does that have any effect on, like if it didn't, if that parcel wasn't on there, would this be in front of you for a subdivision?
I, I think that parcel, I, I think their concern is the part of this land that isn't that parcel. But they need to show that carved out because they know that by the time they come back, that's going to be a separate lot already.
Okay, I hope, I hope you.
So what's your, so frame your concern again. I, I was trying to follow.
We all know that supposedly we own that property and it may be like literally passed.
So, so, so the process has begun for the town to accept ownership of that property. That process is not complete yet. It's not supposed, it's, the, the legal process has begun. As of today, we don't technically legally own it yet. And that is only as far as we're aware because of a process around land court. But there's nothing in, there's nothing that we're aware of that leads us to believe that that's not moving forward as, as.
Right.
Planned and voted on by the town.
So since it's part of their property today while we're approving this, we have to have it on, put it on the plan.
Yeah, as, as of today.
Like common sense is that doesn't make sense, but I, I understand if you're, if you're forced to essentially do this, but you're, it, you have, we, you aren't supposed to be just taking the most minimal interpretate, or I would hope that you would not be taking the most minimal, simplest interpretation. And so you kinda say, well, it's not really eligible, this plan, because this other property is now in this other process. And maybe it's just a matter of if that, I, I wouldn't be so picky if that parcel was taken off and they could resubmit it. But, I mean, is there anything to do with, because, like you're sort of playing both sides here, because that's on there, they're allowed to, but if we took it off, they wouldn't be allowed to do this process?
No, no.
Doesn't matter, legally, it's still their property.
The transfer, the transfer of that property is, is legally underway, as ordered on by town meeting. And I, I see no connection between that and that process, which is ongoing, right? And it's on momentum and this discussion.
Right.
And, and I was just, sorry, I just wanna note that this has a, a timeline of forty-five days. And so they submitted it on the third, so that, that's also like.
January third.
January third, yes. So the deadline for the board to review it would be the February seventeenth. So that's part of, you know, why this is happening now and why this was drawn this way when they submitted it.
Yeah, because when, when they submitted this, the, the, it was one parcel of land. And at some point in time, what is drawn as lot three on here will be donated to the town. And then what's lot one and lot two will be a remaining parcel that they will want to do something with.
And then, so wouldn't you for a subdivision have to go back with the actual property? I don't know, it just seems a little bit sketchy, to say the least.
It's definitely a sketch.
Well.
But either way, that parcel going to the town has to be sectioned off because it's going to the town. So we divide it this way, it's, that parcel goes to the town, they develop the other two parcels.
But then that wouldn't be this preliminary subdivision plan, because it's showing something they don't know. And that, and it, it just.
Yeah, I, I can see where, I see your point in saying that if they come back with a definitive plan where the, the property that they're submitting is different because that portion has gone away, you could argue that it's no longer.
Correct.
Based on the same plan. I, I see that interpretation. I don't want to push that too hard because we, we, it's, they're all up, they're very upfront about this is happening and this is what's happening with, with that. So it, it's not something that is unknown at the time that this is presented to the board as a preliminary plan.
Yeah, and what it does though is set bad precedent.
Uh, what we could do and what we probably, in light of that, is we have the. is, uh, we have the, um, the uh, uh, ability to approve the preliminary plan with modifications suggested. And the modification suggested would be to remove Lot Three from the plan and separate it out by A and R prior to submitting the definitive plan. So we could actually state that in the decision, that that's something we expect to see.
Sounds prudent to me.
Which which would be a clear.
So you're not locking in something, then you are knowing what you're locking into, so to speak, yeah.
Yeah. But tha- that would be a reasonable approach to take, that that addresses in our decision that we expect to see that happen.
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay. The forty-five day part, what you s- you went through there. January third. You may not know, or nobody, it's, didn't have to tell you what the day, but.
Sorry.
When did this property go into land court?
This has nothing to do with.
Well, I'm 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 just gonna try to ask the question, since it's out of a.
So so land court, land court, as it's referred to here, it doesn't mean that there's litigation regarding the land, it.
It's just different system.
Just means that it's.
The way it was set up probably in the eighteen hundreds.
Yeah.
Maybe the seventeen hundreds, I don't know, it it's old.
It it's old, but it a- ask it in good question, Mark. Is it in land court right now? As as a live case to be discussed?
Land court is not about ca- is.
Not a court.
You're you're mixing terminologies.
It's not a judicial thing.
It it's a, it's not about there's litigation on the property. It's about some property is registered, has the deeds registered through one bureaucracy, some has it through another bureaucracy. The term is unfortunate.
Okay, so it's it's free to be used?
Yes.
Okay. So, without those words, land court, it's free to be worked on. And January third, so the so the um, the clock for forty-five days. Yes, no?
The forty-five days.
Forty forty-five days for making a decision
For the planning.
on the uh preliminary plan for the planning board, and seven months for submitting a definitive plan uh, if i- if it's to use the January third zoning rules.
And that's if, and if it does, well, you may not know the answer, but if it doesn't, what does that make and change?
Uh, at this point in time, there's no proposals to change the zoning, which gives, which means if they submit something later than that, they still can. Uh, but it's based on the zoning as it is at that time, um, which probably will be the same as it is now.
So, it's it's not really edge and stone. Within that forty-five days, something could could stop it, it could pot in, it could stop the time and restart again.
No, but what, once they did the submission, they have locked in the zoning as of January third, uh, provided that they submit a definitive plan by August third.
August third, that's forty-five days?
No, that's seven months. They have seven months to submit the definitive plan. The planning board has forty-five days to give whatever feedback and uh make whatever decision is appropriate on the preliminary plan. Those are the two timeframes involved.
Now, it's, other than the seven months, in the plan in office, and that's seven months, in between, there's gonna be some movements going on with with developer and falins and stuff like that, to get it moving, right?
At some point, between now and August third, if they decide they want to move forward, which they don't have to, uh, and keep this zoning locked in, they would file a definitive plan, which would start a new uh public hearing process, uh, and it would show what buildings they wanna build, and we'd go through the wetlands and all of that stuff, and do the full review. This is just a preliminary review uh, based on the information they've given us at this time.
With that part, that's called the a site preview. A site development pre- a preview site plan.
This is a preliminary plan.
And when it's that forty-five days and it's and it's all beefed up and worded and legalized and stuff like that, brings out to for a public discussion?
There'll be a brand-new public process before, uh, when they have a definitive plan, and that's when we get to, you know, mo- most plans like this, they just skip this process entirely, and just go straight to a definitive plan when they're ready to build something. They're not ready to build something, and, but they think they might be within seven months, and that's, so they're doing this process tonight.
Okay, and last thing, were all boards involved on the land, probably the the wetlands and stuff like that, they begin the same plans of seeing what's there, they get to go through this whole process altogether. In their boards, planning boards, or whatever, and then say, this is how we're looking at it, and this is how we're gonna present it in our boards.
Uh, I'm not entirely, a- at the preliminary stage, uh, we ask for inputs from the other departments in town, and they have all said, based on the information here, we don't have any input at this stage.
Okay, so until then, this input, it would be said to the public at their bo- at their own board meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I just have, I promised to be the last, but I I just wanna sort of caution that I know I've heard this board, or not the board, people coming through the board, but you approved it before, right? And there's essentially, let's face it, zero information. It technically complies with, I would argue, a portion of our process. I would argue it doesn't comply with the other portion, because of what it clearly says should be discussed at this public meeting. But I understand why you're doing it. So, then, they come back and say, but you, but now you approved this, and we spent all this money on engineering, and so you need to help us out. And I I think that we have to draw the line and do exactly what you've told us, that you will do, is that it's, this doesn't really matter for that next stage, I don't care how much time you did spend, how much engineer, whatever, it starts over. And I think that's, I mean, if I take you at your word, that's how you're looking at it, presenting it. But I have heard that many times said to you from someone presenting their development, right? You kinda, you kinda led us, that's why we came here, you said it was gonna work out, right? I I have definitely heard it, I I can show the tape, I'm not getting too many nods, but I think some of them are.
Yeah, well, you know, I I know what you're talking about, the there's a big difference between someone having a site plan that has lapsed
Mm-hmm.
uh, because, you know, the economics of it, they let it sit for more than two years. The plan expired, and they came back with essentially the same plan, and said, well, I'm doing the same thing I was already approved to do, I'm just making these changes that make it better, you should approve it, and that that's not an unreasonable argument. Um, but at thi- this point, we have made it very clear to the applicant, you know, we haven't looked at A, B, C, D through Z, uh, because the information's not really here, so if we approve this, we're approving with the caveat that we haven't looked at these things at this stage, and they're all totally fair game in the definitive plan. I I I'm quite sure they've gotten that message.
And we.
And we have not.
Can put that in writing in our decision, too, maybe?
Um.
The the bylaws state, clearly state that if approval of a preliminary plan does not constitute approval of of subdivision, um, of definitive plans, or, um, so, I mean.
Yeah.
So that's covered, and then I guess the other thing is just not to 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 honor what you had said about the public and not be sort of arms-twisted, because you feel bad for somebody, 'cause they spent money in engineering. That's on.
Right, well.
Yeah.
Well, it it would depend on the process, i- if they had come with a plan that showed that looked like a plan of what they might actually build, that showed the buildings, and it said, you know, we're gonna do this, this, and this, and we did a more comprehensive review of it and said, you know, you're gonna need this waiver, and unless you make this change, I don't think we're gonna grant that waiver. And they came back and they made that change, then I would say, yeah, we we probably need to grant that waiver. We're not doing any of that.
Okay.
Um, that would be a great use of the preliminary plan process, um, but that's
Not what we've been given.
not what we're doing.
Yeah.
And not what they're trying to do.
Okay.
So, the o- the only big issue, uh, if they submit prior to the August third deadline, uh, is if there have been any changes in the zoning, uh, or the subdivision rules, uh, is, does their definitive plan properly match the preliminary plan so as to lock in their grandfathering, uh, to not be subject to the changes in rules? And and that's something we will look carefully at. Um, I don't know what rules we might have that that would impact. That being the case, um, I think, let's see, this decision looks exactly the same, um.
It is.
The, um.
What would be the edit to make it with modification?
Um, it would be to approve the preliminary plan with the following modifications suggested uh, by the board, or agreed upon by the person submitting the plan, which I assume you'll agree to.
Sure.
He stated it at the beginning as well.
I just wanted clearly say it for the record, so he did, uh, that, uh, Lot Three uh, will be, uh, that the areas of Lot Three will be removed through an A and R process, uh, and that that will be removed from the plan prior to any definitive plan.
Sounds good.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve, uh, with that modification? So move.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any of, uh, that passes three zero. Uh, no objections, okay, yeah, so it's, uh. All right, so I think we have some signing to do, um, do we have any, uh, reports or administrative matters? Um, uh, we do, we have these minutes?
No, um, I wasn't able to finish them for this meeting, so I'll have them for the next.
All right, uh, in that case, uh, I would suggest that, uh, I don't think we need to sign these within the meeting, so we can adjourn and then sign off-camera?
I move that we adjourn the meeting at nine oh one P M.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero, thank you, and.